I call to order the Gladstone City Council meeting for August ninth, two thousand and twenty-two at six thirty P M. Good evening, everybody. The city of Gladstone is abiding by guidelines set forth in House Bill twenty-five sixty, which requires we make all meetings accessible remotely through technological means and provide the opportunity for the general public to participate to the best of our ability. Therefore, this meeting will be open to the public, both in person and virtually using the Zoom platform. The council members and staff will be in person, our council chambers, as well as those citizens that wish to attend in person. The Zoom access instructions can be found on the meeting agenda. Public comment requests were accepted prior to noon today and were to include your topic and phone number. And because this is a hybrid meeting, please be patient if we run into any glitches. In order to keep this moving forward, if folks become disruptive, we will mute the microphones and remove them from the meeting. If that fails to stop the disruption, we will recess the meeting and return within five minutes. If we are unable to continue, council will briefly meet to move unfinished business to the next council agenda. Tonight, we will begin with the Clackamas Fire District number one update, followed by the consent agenda, which includes approval of the July twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two regular meeting minutes, approval of the June bank balances, budget report for periods ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, approval of the June check register, legal costs on projects, department head monthly reports for July two thousand and twenty-two, consider approval of the Gladstone Community Event Sponsorship Program, and consider approval of a traffic safety overtime grant from the Oregon Department of Transportation, also referred to as ODOT, for the Gladstone Police Department. Our regular meeting agenda includes item number nine, which is the contract for Phase One Progressive Design Build for the Public Works Facility project. Item ten is the Meldrum Bar Park Conceptual Site Plan. Eleven is City Administrator Employment Contract Discussion. And item twelve is the Intergovernmental Agreement, also referred to as an I G A, between the cities of Gladstone, Oregon City, and Saint Helens for judicial services. Tammy, could you do, please do a roll call?
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Present.
Counselor Hartman.
Here.
Counselor Todd.
Here.
Counselor Garlington.
Here.
Mayor Stimple.
Here. Could everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, and the God in this home with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're first going to start with the Clackamas Fire District one update.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council and staff. What we're gonna do is kind of team update here. I'm gonna talk about Gladstone's specific things that we've been doing within our organization here, and then the chief's gonna talk about kind of Clackamas Fire District broader subjects. So been a busy month for us. We had one hundred and fifty-three calls in the calls for service in the month of July. And more importantly, we've had tons of opportunity to engage the public this month. We had our national eye out. The, we've been continuing to participate in the Max Patterson Kids Park Days. Tons of good feedback there, lots of opportunity to have kids call around the fire engine and ask lots of questions. Of course, the Gladstone Community Festival where we helped in the parade. We did have a call or two during that, but we were able to still get involved there. Also, with regards to the parade and the festival, there was a dunk tank and apparently some type of competition that I think, I'm not sure if our chief won or Chief Schmerber won. I think a lot of people didn't like him, so he got dunked. No, I'm just joking. But like I say, we did the car show. I just couldn't believe how many people were there. And, and so I'm not sure who the winner of that, of that car show is, but lots of awesome cars there. And then other stuff, we did a barbecue at Abimir. They threw a barbecue for the police department and us. So those types of things are going on. We're getting tons of great feedback. Really getting a chance to answer questions, engage the public, which is perfect for us. As far as the fire station remodel goes, it's in full swing. Constantly people there, framers, plumbers, electricians. So far, going great, hopefully staying on schedule, supply chain issues, all those types of things are, we're just crossing our fingers. We can get it, get it done because we're, we're kind of adapting and overcoming with the facility there. But I, I'm optimistic it's gonna happen. So with that, Chief Brown's gonna talk about, well, a fire we had in Gladstone and then outside Clackamas, things that you might be interested in.
Awesome. Thanks, Cap. Just, just real quickly, Chief Schmerber is the man. I honestly enjoy serving side by side with him. The, the compassion that he has for the citizens of Gladstone is just evident in his day-to-day action. As we were battling it out in the dunk tank, he, it just, he was ear to ear with the smile on his face. And it just was awesome to be able to serve side by side with him during that. And then another instance also was the Fourth of July event that, that he spearheaded and invited us to come attend with. Five hundred and twenty hot dogs handed out, five hundred and thirty? Just, just absolutely amazing. And so just, just a blast to be able to, to serve side by side with him. You guys got a, a great police chief. Some district updates. We graduated ten lateral hires July seventh that hit the line. And this was a pretty diverse work group that, that brought in. There's about a hundred and thirty years of experience between the ten. We had a firefighter from FDNY that's joined our ranks. Charleston, South Carolina, Kern County, California, and then the rest have been local fire departments in the state of Oregon. So really diverse experience level and, and a diverse group of firefighters to join the, the ranks of the Clackamas Fire family. Captain Bauer spoke to the hundred and fifty-three calls for service in Gladstone. As a fire district, we had two thousand three hundred and fifty-one. The, the two alarm fire in the city of Gladstone, that was, brought roughly forty Clackamas firefighters to the fire. Not all of them utilized. Once we got a hold ahead of the fire, the second alarm was, was cleared. A resident, a local resident was, was awesome in the fact that notifying the, the homeowners that the, that the house was on fire. Crews did an excellent job with, with multiple things going. The deck was on fire, which extended to the neighbor's shed and the house. It was a quick knockdown. Crews did an amazing job, but that, that neighbor that notified did an awesome job getting, helping to get the family out. We deployed a, a task force to the McKinney Fire. Now, I remember last city council meeting, there was a question about what's that look like as far as task forces? And this is a perfect example. So we deployed a task force where from Clackamas Fire, we sent two Type Threes, a water tender, and two task force leaders. And the task force leaders are the ones that, that, that oversee the task force. They're typically chief officers. And we did all of that without disruption to the service of Gladstone, Oregon City, Happy Valley. All of our stations still staff twenty-four seven with the full staffing, paramedic coverage. So anytime we go on deployments, it does not affect the staffing, on the day-to-day staffing. That's all extra hires. So it's off-duty crews, or if it's an on-duty crew that go, it gets backfilled with, with on-duty crews. So there's never, anytime we go to help our, our regional partners or any fires in the state, it never affects the service levels here. And the McKinney Fires is an excellent example of that. Crews did an awesome job helping out, and they returned home on Sunday. Two last things, and then I'm gonna be quiet and open up for any questions. In coordination with community paramedic Amy Jo Cook and farm marshal Sean Olson and our local partners, they established and delivered the fire buckets. I don't know if you guys saw that on the social media. That's for the house's population up on Newell Creek. And we distributed first aid kits, ponchos, warming blankets, solar phone chargers, fire extinguishers, and other self-care items. And funds were provided by the Oregon State Fire Marshal's Office for that project. Pretty amazing opportunity and helped a lot of people. Last but not least, we have a joint oversight committee this Thursday. We had to bypass July's, and so we're excited for this Thursday. All right. Looking forward to seeing you. Thursday at four o'clock. Right? Four? Perfect. All right. Be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Counselor Garlington, any questions?
Um, I thought I had one. I forgot, so never mind.
All right. Counselor Todd.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Counselor Hartman.
No questions. Thank you.
Counselor Tracy.
No question.
Counselor Alexander.
None. Thanks.
Counselor Ripley.
No questions.
And I have none, so that was really easy.
Awesome.
Thank you very much for your hard work, guys. All right. Are there any agenda additions or corrections?
No, but I do want to be clear with the public that the city did amend the agenda last Thursday. And so you should have all of the documents related to the next agenda item, which we're going to cover, as well as item number twelve that the mayor mentioned was added at the beginning of the meeting.
All right. Do we have any correspondence?
I have nothing.
All right. Consent agenda. Do we have any questions or concerns? Counselor Garlington.
I do not.
Counselor Todd.
No.
Counselor Hartman.
Have none. Thank you.
Counselor Tracy.
Nothing.
Counselor Alexander.
No, thank you.
Counselor Ripley.
No.
All right. Well, then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I'll second.
Cool.
Motion was made by Counselor Hartman and seconded in tandem by counselors Todd and Alexander. Do we have any other questions or concerns? I don't see any. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counsel, Counselor Hartman.
Hi.
Counselor Tracy.
Hi.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Mayor Stimple.
Yes. Consent agenda has passed. So before we start, I'd like to say a few things. First, for those folks that would like to speak, the deadline to accept comments was noon today. And as a reminder, we allow three minutes for public comment. Second, as I do before every meeting, I would like to say a few words regarding the city council. The most important limitation we have sitting here is that we are representing the citizens of Gladstone, not our own personal agendas and beliefs. There have been many times when a decision being made doesn't align with what we would like personally, but have made a decision based on what is best for the city as a whole. That doesn't mean our personal beliefs have changed, just that the city's needs were more important. As we discuss and consider matters, there are laws and rules we have to use as the basis of our decisions. They start at the federal and state level and filter down to our city's comprehensive plan, city charter, codes, and ordinances. We do not have the luxury of randomly making decisions, but instead we have to be consistent and take a path that is defensible. Right. First item is number nine, which is to consider authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with PNC Construction to provide Phase One Progressive Design Build Services for the Gladstone Public Works Facility in the amount of two hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars staff.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. We're excited to bring this project to you. As you recall, in November of two thousand and twenty-one, the voters approved the city of Gladstone to borrow funds to build a new public works facility. We went through a process of also asking the city council to do what's called a progressive design build project, which is what we did for this building that you're sitting in tonight. And it allows the city to go through an expedited process where you hire a contractor and an architect at the same time. So tonight, we're pleased. We have a project manager who is Kim Knox. She also helped us with the Gladstone Civic Center. She is going to come up and she's going to walk you through the process that we went to to recommend that you consider an approval of a contract tonight for PNC Construction.
Okay. Hi. Thank you.
Welcome back.
Thank you. It's great to be back. Kim Knox, Michelle Zobelitz Johnson. Do we have to do our address or phone number? I forget. Okay. And I am joined today by Jeremiah.
Jeremiah Dodson.
Dodson. Thank you, Jeremiah. I panicked right there. Jeremiah is with PNC Construction. So we both came up here to, to be available for your questions. Like Jackie said, our firm was hired by the city to, as we did with this building, kind of manage the front end and help you guys pick a, a good team. And I think we've done that. The, the summary in your packet describes, we put out a request for proposals at the beginning of May. Mid-May, we had a onsite tour for any interested firms that might be interested in proposing on the project. We had what we could tell is about three firms that came to that site tour. And as a result, at the end of the month, the proposals were due, or beginning of June, the, the proposals were due, and we received one proposal from the PNC Construction and Scott Edwards Architects team. This is the same team that built this building. And so, you know, it puts, it puts us in kind of an interesting spot. Am I doing the feedback or is that something else? Anyway, anyway, puts us in a funny spot. So we wanted to make sure that we were conscientious and, and vetting, you know, a single. We only get one. It's, it's harder to, you want to make sure that we've done a good competitive process. And so what we did is we then scheduled an interview with the PNC team to make sure that we understood them. They understood the proposal and, and what was in the, what was contained in the project, the nature of the project, the nature of relationships we were looking for. And in that process, we had Jackie Betts, city administrator. We had Darren Canaparoli from the Public Works Director, and we had, and we had Assistant Public Works Director from Milwaukee as well that participated in that process. And then your city attorney, Chad Jacobs, and I kind of sat in ex officio in that process to advise and answer any questions. As a result of that conversation, one of the key topics in that was, when we put out the proposal, it was, here's how much money we have. This is what we did before. It's like, we're not kidding. This is how much money we have. And I asked everybody to be honest with us about, is that a reasonable budget? And what, you know, and can we attain our goals? And because one of the bottom lines for the city of Gladstone, we all know, is we only have so much money. And it's like, it's, it's very critical. And so in the process, we said, we need a building that's this much. And we asked for, can we build a new building for this amount of money? The PNC team's proposal came back and said, we can meet your budget with a renovated building, or we can spend another couple million dollars and build a brand-new building. So, but what, but what they were also able to communicate very well was the building they could build for our budget would meet the programmatic changes that the city's looking for. It could meet the, the design intent that you want to, the image of a newer building. We're upgrading this facility. It's not a, a metal building anymore. It's a, it's a, it's a building of substance. And the, in, through the interview process, we were convinced that the intent of the original work, or the intent of the city's goals could be met with this scenario, as well as there were some upsides of a renovated rather than new project, which is that there are, there's fewer supply chains. We heard earlier, you know, supply chain is a big issue when you're not building a whole bunch of brand-new materials and new construction. That reduces the list and exposure that everybody has to, to some of those issues. We felt the design team was very strong in their experience, not only on this project, but as a, as a, as a combined architecture contractor firm. Because as we all probably know, architects and contractors don't always agree. But we know that these two have worked together and, and they know how to do that. And that they also know what's important to the city. I mean, there was a learning curve for this building when, you know, you can only say, no kidding, this is all the money we have, really. So that was a learning process, and the team came across and, and really communicated their appreciation for that and their willingness to kind of, that is the base assumption of the project. So the building will use, reuse some of the existing structure and, and materials, which is a more sustainable strategy than building all-new construction. I don't know if you remember this building, but when we started digging in the ground, we got in, there was a lot of surprises there. And so what this does is avoid some of that exposure and risk to the city because that's a cost that the contractor doesn't bear. That's called a discovery. It's not something they would have known in advance. So it falls on the city to pay for those things. So this, the, the renovated project really decreases the risk to the city from that side. And so those are, I'm trying to think of what else is the, anyway, and we get the new functions that everybody says they want. So what the, the, the selection committee then recommends is going ahead and proceeding with the PNC and Scott Edwards Architecture team. The program will be consistent. Basically, we've kind of listed in here is what's in this, part of the attachments is the AIA A one forty-one form. And what's in there, basically, in the progressive design world, you are approving Phase One, which is this kind of due diligence reconnaissance preliminary design step. It's not design the whole building. You're only approving them to design a building and price it and come back to you later for a more informed cost estimate, right, or cost proposal for what we're gonna carry them through the end of the project. So what your, what the, the goalpost that you're establishing with this contract today is a program that meets the program that we had in the, the RFP. It's a four point four million dollar budget, as was in the RFP. The Phase One scope of work, the services associated with that is what you're being asked to review, approve today, which is that two hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollar contract. We would be coming, one thing I do, and then at the end of that, we'd be coming back to you. Once we have that full package, we'll have some design documents. We'll understand the furniture better. You know, we understand more how the whole building functions before we come back to you and say, let's, let's keep going with it or not. So one correction I do want to make to the, the memo I sent to you. It says that we'd be coming back to you in October. That's an error. We'd be coming back to you the beginning of December. It's a little more work than, than a basic kind of concept design, so we'll be coming back to you then with a package to review and, and get your thoughts on. So with that scheduled, projected building occupancy is the spring of two thousand and twenty-four. Patience, patience. It takes a while to get things designed and built, so. But that's, that's actually a little faster than what we did for this building, so that's encouraging. And, and then, and then I, we've attached the, the sign-in sheet for the site tour of the firms that were here that day. So that's my technical memo in a, in a nutshell. Happy to answer any questions, and I know Jeremiah is here as well to answer any questions you have as well. And we have some other folks from PNC and Scott Edwards Architecture here as well, so we can.
Yeah, we have Brian, Brian Shoemaker, Vice President with PNC, and Brandon Dole with Scott Edwards here, supporting.
And this is the guy we're gonna be talking to every day, so that's why he's up here. So he's the, the one-on-one relationship, and that's why he's up meeting with us today, so.
On the hot seat.
On the hot seat. So, did you guys get my memo about thinking up really hard questions for the contractor?
Well, we'll start with Counselor Garlington. Hopefully, she's got some hard ones.
I just, I, I'm thankful that you've taken on this project, all of you, and I'm excited to see where it lands, where it goes. And I, I, our city, I know that they are awesome people to work with. I know if you can't find it, Jackie knows people. Darren has great ideas. I've heard him talk about this building a few times, and I, I think he, he has a really good vision. So I, I think between you and him, I'm, I'm just really excited to meet back with you here in December then. Thank you so much.
Counselor Todd.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Counselor Hartman.
Thank you. You did answer my question in your presentation, so thank you. I just want to clarify that I heard that correctly, but we're moving to renovate existing buildings not completely knocked down. Is that what I heard correctly? Okay. I just wanted to clarify that, so thank you.
Counselor Tracy.
Just real curious, I don't want to go into the weeds on this, but when you're talking about preserving portions of the building, are we talking about structural portions? Because I'm not looking at the skin. I mean, obviously, that's gonna go away, so are you? Can you just tell us a little bit about what the, what the vision is here? Are we gonna maintain the steel erection and structure and then start working from there?
Basically, yes. The structure, the, like, the skeleton is gonna remain. The foundations are gonna remain, for sure. That's a baseline. And then we get to explore options and work with our partner, Scott Edwards, moving forward.
Okay, but I'm gonna understand that there's potential for a new build on certain amounts of square feet that would be added to this building at some point, or you're, you're not there yet, I understand.
Yeah, we're not there. We, we do have new facade work, so the skin, the outside.
Okay.
And storefront systems, and so that's gonna be part of our initial design.
Okay. Thank you. That's good, good information.
Counselor Alexander.
I got all my questions, sir. Thank you.
Counselor Ripley.
I have no questions. Thanks.
All right. My only question is, I know when we were talking about this, I believe the direction from council was that we were gonna get a new building, and I understand that with costs, what they are today, that's not possible. But if it was changing from that concept, should we have been brought in sooner than now we're moving forward with the contract?
When PNC submitted their proposal, they gave us the two options, and that's what we're bringing to you tonight. If you would prefer to go a different route, then we would have to put a pause on the project and discuss the six million dollar budget for that. But we did have our city attorney involved, so he could talk about what our responsibility is to the bond market because we did borrow money. So I will have Chad explain a little bit about the comfort level and using an adaptive reuse building.
Right. My concern is the language that was in the ballot measure. Did we state that we were gonna be building a new building, or are we okay moving forward with the adaptive reuse model?
So Mayor, Council, Chad Jacobs from the City Attorney's Office. We looked at that exact issue, and we talked to Bond Council about that exact issue because we had the exact same concerns that you're raising tonight. In discussions with Bond Council, they were very comfortable that this would constitute a new, new building, even though we're, as Jackie said, having some adaptive reuse of a lot of the materials. It was still, we're basically changing it from a warehouse to a Class A office building, and that is a new building. It's a new use, and it really satisfies what the intent of the ballot measure as presented to the bond market was. So everyone's very comfortable with that.
Okay. Any questions for the attorney?
I did think of one question I had. I thought originally we were a little bit concerned with the flooding over there. I'll leave it at that. That's one of the things that we're gonna have the team look at right away, is kind of what's causing that. That's always kind of a big conundrum about not knowing, because it could, there's anecdotes and there's history. And gee, I remember it was raining a lot that day, you know, those kinds of things. So with the team on board, we'll be able to dive into that in a little more technically informed way. So that's on their top of their to-do list. Yeah. Thanks for raising that.
All right. Well, I don't see anybody else having any questions, and you need us to approve or not approve this. So I would entertain a motion from somebody to direct staff to go ahead and move forward with this contract.
There is a recommended staff action on the bottom of page nine dash one for a motion.
It's in the old, I think it's in the old one. Yeah.
I'll make the motion to consider author, or authorizing the city administrator to approve to enter into an agreement with PNC Construction to provide Phase One Progressive Design Build Services for the Gladstone Public Works Facility in the amount of two hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second.
Motion was made by Counselor Hartman and seconded by Counselor Garlington. Do we have any other questions or concerns? I don't see any. Could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Hi.
Counselor Hartman.
Hi.
Mayor Stimple.
Yes. Move forward. Awesome. Yay. All right. Next is item ten, which is to consider approval of the Meldrum Bar Park Conceptual Site Plan.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I'm going to have our Public Works Director, Darren Canaparoli, introduce our consultant for this project, another city council goal that we've been working on for the past year. And we'll have a brief presentation on the site plan.
Thank you, Jackie. In July of two thousand and twenty-one, City Council approved to move forward with ESA consultants to develop the Meldrum Bar Site Plan. Tonight, we have Steve Roloff with ESA, and he's gonna go through the process pretty much from start to finish to show you what we have come up with. Steve?
Thanks, Darren. Good evening. Thank you. It's an honor to be here. Got a presentation here. We're queuing up, and most of what I'm gonna show you, you have in your council packets already. But anyway, my name is Steve Roloff. I'm a principal landscape architect with Environmental Science Associates, ESA, based out of the Portland office. And it has been my absolute honor to work on the conceptual site plan for Meldrum Bar Park. We recognize this is a beloved and well-used park. It's absolute asset for the, for the city of Gladstone and, and the greater community. And we, we recognize the responsibility here of, of working within this, this space. And what we really aimed to do was to, to fine-tune some aspects of the park, to introduce a few new ideas, but by no means are we. But by no means are we suggesting any major overhauls of this remarkable park. But we found, we think there's some really neat opportunities for improvements here.
Yeah, let's tight, let's hold tight for just a moment.
Okay, thank you. I have to tell you all, I do a lot of presentations, but this is the first time in two years I've been live in front of, in front of a group. So hopefully it goes smoothly. I'm not too rusty. I've gotten so used to Zoom and Teams. All right. Let's see, it looks like I have a little pointer and a forward button. Okay.
It doesn't work.
Need to aim it anywhere for the forward.
It's not, okay.
Can you, could I could just do next slide?
Let's hang on, hold on. No, that's not what we, hold on.
Oh, it looks like it worked.
Okay.
Great. Okay. All right. Here we go. I'm going to keep this as brief as possible, but there are a number of things I'd like to go through with you, so you can understand the process and how we came to a preferred conceptual site plan. Feel free to ask questions after my presentation. So I'll, I'll go into some important details here and there, but for the most part, I'm going to kind of stay up, up above some of the detail. Into, in my presentation today, we're going to talk about the background and the site, the background of the project and the site analysis. We'll talk about the project website and the community engagement process. We'll briefly share alternative concepts A and B that we developed during the planning process. And then we'll talk about the preferred conceptual site plan, and I will review the cost, the construction cost estimate. So the background, project background and site analysis. Our work is all based on the 2017 Citywide Parks Master Plan. That's a very nice document. It has a section about Meldrum Bar. We, we built our proposals on, on what was proposed in there, as well as some additional features. We took a close look at the existing conditions of the park. We identified opportunities and we identified constraints. So as I mentioned, the Citywide Parks Master Plan, this identified, you know, aspects such as improved pedestrian pathways, ADA circulation, improvements to the playground. So we built off of those ideas. This is the existing conditions plan that we put together. I won't go through this in detail. This is in your packet, but this just documents the, the existing park features as they are today. And as we all know, this is a riverfront park at the, nearly at the confluence of the, the Clackamas and the Willamette Rivers. Just a really remarkable regional location here. We looked at the constraints, and what the constraints we focused on are some of the regulatory constraints here that most of you may be aware of. From, we, we got our mapping from Clackamas County, and we tied this back to the Gladstone Municipal Code where appropriate. There's some mapped wetlands on site. There are most of the park is within the 100-year flood plain or what's called the flood management area in the Gladstone Municipal Code. And then one of the most important constraints to consider is the floodway areas that are in the dark blue in the upper right corner. Those are FEMA-regulated zones that are protected to convey downstream flows of floodwaters. What does that mean for us? That means we don't want to propose any structures or any built features in the floodway. That, that would not be good for those features, and it would require a lot of analysis and permitting with FEMA. And then there's some other local regulatory overlays of water quality resource areas, more riparian buffer type features, habitat conservation areas, and the entire park is in the Willamette River Greenway. So the project opportunities, and again, building from the Citywide Master Plan. There are some real opportunities to provide a better ADA access to recreation amenities. This is an older park, and it does not meet current ADA standards for connecting the key features within the park to people of all physical abilities. We see opportunities to add and enhance pedestrian bicycle routes and connections, both at a regional scale and within the park itself. And this is something we heard from the public surveys that folks really support. We see some opportunities to provide a little better access to the riverfront while protecting riverfront habitat. Provide clearly defined parking areas throughout the park. There's a lot of parking, but some areas could be defined a little bit better for safety and efficiency of parking. And then re-envisioning the staging and stockpiling area on the north side of the Meldrum Bar Park Road and, and understanding how that might serve the community with more active recreation features. This is just a zoom in here of the opportunities map we put together, and I, for time's sake, I won't go through all of that. Two other, two other opportunities, what, three quick opportunities I want to note here also are better signage at some of the entrance locations, especially the Jensen Road Bike Path. That could be celebrated more as a non-vehicular entrance to the park. And then opportunities to reconsider the, the location of the RC Car Track and the BMX Track, the RC Car Track being right down by the river in the boat ramp. And maybe, maybe there could be another location in the park for that. So I want to now talk about the project website and the community engagement process that we went through here on this project. Very important to hear the voice of the community when, when looking at especially the existing parks that folks just love. So the engagement process, we, our firm built a project website. The intent of the website was to share these graphics, diagrams, and maps we've created, but also to host public surveys. So we set up a project website. Then we engaged in a couple stakeholder interviews back in December. We launched public survey number one, where we really asked folks, what do they, what do they like about the park? What are they, what improvements would they like to see at the park? How do they use the park? Those basic kind of questions. We hadn't proposed any design ideas at that point. That survey, we had, we proposed 12 questions on the website. We got 158 respondents. We were thrilled by that. That's a, that's a very good turnout, in, in our opinion, for a community the size of Gladstone, just fantastic. We met with the park board to talk about the results of survey number one. Then we put together two, two concepts, A and B, and we went back to another public survey number two on the website. We asked elevens questions about what do folks like about concepts A and B. We got 133 respondents there, also a very nice turnout. And then we went back and met with the park board to talk about that, the responses to that. And they reviewed a draft preferred conceptual site plan. We've made some modifications based on their comments, and that's what I'm presenting here this evening. I'm sure many of you saw the project website. We designed this to really mirror the graphic design of the city of Gladstone website. We tried to make it clear and concise and accessible to, to people of all backgrounds. We were trying to convey a lot of information, so that was a bit of a balancing act, but we did our best on that. So just an example of the website here. And then I wanted to share with you briefly just some snippets of some of the survey findings, some of the example questions. You know, what do you like most about Meldrum Bar Park? We heard from folks, you know, a, a lot of the obvious things, sports, access to the river, riverfront location, walking paths, et cetera. Are there improvements that folks would like to see? They'd like to see pathways along the river and better connections, nature trails. What types of riverfront amenities would you like to see? I know pathways along the river, picnic tables and shelters, viewpoints, things like that. So just, you know, no surprises, but, but good confirmation of, of opportunities at the park. So we developed two concepts, A and B. I won't go through these in, in great detail, but let me point out a key, a couple key differences. Concept A proposes an off-leash dog area on the terrace up above the sport field area. It also rearranges the, the baseball and softball fields to be regulation-sized fields. And in order to do that, we had to remove Field Four to make that happen. It does propose in the, in the kind of bold white lines, an extensive paved ADA pathway system throughout the park that provides loop opportunities for walking and jogging and bicycle riding, et cetera. Proposes some moving the BMX Track and the RC Car Track up to the staging area, some entrance improvements, some new picnic shelters, a restroom at Doll Beach Park. And then some really, some riverfront access at that lowest parking lot, sort of at the terminus of the Jensen Road Bike Path as it, as it comes toward the river there. So those were some of the big moves on Concept A. Concept B, some very similar moves, but the big change here is the sports fields stay in their current configuration, their current size. But Field Five is replaced with a stage and community event space. This would be an opportunity for a gathering area for the community. You know, we're not imagining there'd be big rock concerts or anything here. These are smaller performances, plays, maybe even tournament ceremonies for sports tournaments, but just a neat place for the community to gather. And then also here, some additional riverfront access, lots of pathways, et cetera. So for the sake of time, I'll, I'll sort of keep moving on that. And what we heard from the public is, so we, we presented these two concepts on the, on the website. Folks did like the amphitheater in, or the stage and lawn amphitheater. They also, a lot of support for the off-leash dog area. This is something we, it was one of the most positively supported features we proposed. And then folks really supported the, the addition of new walking and bicycling paths in the loop opportunities that those provide. Riverfront improvements, strong support for being able to get down to a picnic shelter, picnic tables, benches, et cetera, near the river. So the preferred conceptual site plan. This is an overview of the plan, and then I will zoom in here just a little bit so we can see things better. So this plan, it, it's not Concept A, and it's not Concept B, but it's bringing together the most supported and, and best ideas of those two concepts, and then fine tuning those ideas a bit. You'll see the dog park is, the off-leash dog area is still proposed up on the terrace above the, the sports fields. We've added a small parking lot up there so that there's ADA access. That, that area is about 20 feet above the parking lot down below. So to make sure that folks of all physical abilities could use the dog park, we've proposed a small parking area and then a pad for a portable restroom up there, so folks don't need to go elsewhere in the park to find that. At the main entrance of the park, all the concepts show a bypass lane around the pay station. A lot of folks asked for that. And let's see, and then over in the staging and stockpiling area, we've put the RC Car Track on the, the small hillside there. We heard from the public engagement, if we were to move the RC Car Track somewhere on a hillside, would be a very important location. We cited that there. We've provided some overflow parking over in that area, as well as moving the BMX Track from the Cottonwood Grove up to that area. And we're proposing something that's a little different than a BMX Track. It's called a pump track. Some of you may be familiar. A lot of smaller communities around the state are building these. They're more accessible to riders of all abilities and ages than a full-blown BMX Track. People aren't getting air on their bikes, but they're swooping around through these built berms and over little whoop-de-dos. So it's a great family-friendly activity. It's a much more modern version of, of a BMX Track. And they've, they're popping up all over the state right now. This plan does propose the best of the pathway system, so those bold white lines would be new paved ADA pathways. And very importantly is a pathway, we wanted to think about the regional trail connection. So, you know, there is the existing paved path at Doll Beach Park that terminates under the, the highway bridge. But I understand that there is a vision to continue that path up the Clackamas River eventually. Fantastic idea, and we'd love to be thinking forward on that here at Meldrum Bar Park and making sure our path system is connecting into that proposed regional path system. So here, there is a major path all along the, the Doll Park Road, connecting up to the Meldrum Bar Park Road, and then swooping through the staging area and heading up to the entrance of the park. So that creates a big spine of active transport, bicycle and walking transportation through the park. While I'm talking about the paved pathways, another safety element here is we've proposed a number of raised crosswalks at key locations for a, a passage back and forth from the active features of the park. And these would be slightly raised crosswalks, so the vehicular traffic has to slow way down to go over them. It's a little more effective than a painted crosswalk for sort of flipping that hierarchy of pedestrians and vehicles and making sure the vehicles understand they are in a pedestrian-dominated space. This plan does propose a, the event space, replacing Field Five, renovations at the playground, several picnic shelters. We've shown two small picnic shelters, one at the, the RC Track, one at the pump track to help kind of foster community and gathering at those two spaces. Another new picnic shelter near the sports fields, and then another picnic shelter down at the riverfront, the new riverfront access location. Oh, and then finally, one picnic shelter in the area that folks call the Orchard, kind of over by the Cottonwood Grove. I, I think that would be a really neat space to potentially be a reservable shelter there. It's a little more of a private space. A lot of open lawn there. It could be used for family gatherings or, or other events. And then down, down at the, sort of at the terminus of the Jensen Road Bike Path, where it comes down in, in meets that existing parking lot and shelter. We've proposed modifying the, there's the high parking lot up there that overlooks the river, pulling that back a bit from, from, it's kind of a strange shape, and it's not striped right now. It's an inefficient parking space. We've proposed pulling that back from the edge of the river and then creating a, a river viewpoint and pedestrian space right on that riverfront edge, as well as a little viewpoint folks can walk out to that we're calling the Confluence Viewpoint that looks upstream to that confluence of the Clackamas and Willamette Rivers. And then just downstream from there is, would be replacing that lowest parking lot with a pedestrian space on the river. And I have a few sketches here. Why don't I just jump to that riverfront pedestrian space and parking lot there? It's a lot easier to explain. And I, I want to just put a caveat. These are just artistic sketches, some initial ideas. These are not fully designed. This is a planning process, but it conveys a, it conveys some ideas, and it conveys a feeling of what these spaces might be like. So you can see here, the lower parking lot is transformed into an area with a picnic shelter, benches, tables, and then access to the river for people who like to fish or paddleboarders, or, or, or anybody who wants to get right down on the riverfront. So it'd be a really neat space that, that right now is just a big gravel parking lot. And I know parking's an issue, but we've, we've proposed a bunch of little parking pods throughout the park. So yeah, let me jump back to that just for one moment. Sorry. You can see there's little gray kind of rectangles with some parking striping kind of along the roadways. Those we're, we're calling parking pods, smaller groups of parking eight to 10, 12 vehicles, trying to break up that parking, so we don't have a big parking lot that kind of feels like a Walmart parking lot inside of a park. So to try to maintain that nice character of a park. This plan does propose a plumbed restroom at Doll Beach Park. So just outside of Meldrum, of course, but it seemed like a real, a, a necessary location for a restroom. And then this is our other sketch we put together, kind of looking eastward from that intersection of Meldrum Bar Park Road and the Doll, and the Doll Road, looking kind of over the pump track, out over the overflow parking, the RC Track and the distance, way out in the distance is the little stage. You can see a hint of the new picnic shelter near the baseball fields. And then you can also see how that, the path, the paved path system may work here with some intersection improvements, some safety improvements with crosswalks, and then the, the major spine of, of what would be the future regional trail coming down through that active space near the pump track and then continuing on the, the east side of the, the Doll Park Road. So a lot of things going on here. I, I know I'm moving fast. We've been working on this for about a year, and there, I have a lot of information in my head. Finally, the construction cost estimate. All of you have a very detailed construction cost estimate in front of you. It's a little more detailed than we often would do at a planning level. But we felt it was very important for the community to, to fully understand what the costs of each of these features may be. And we broke this up strategically by essentially park location and amenity. So one way to do a cost estimate would be to say, the asphalt across the whole site would cost this, the fencing across the whole site would cost that. But here, we've broken it up into these specific areas, thinking ahead to potential grant proposals that the city may want to do and say, hey, we're going to, we're going to try to get funding for the off-leash dog area. How much does that cost? And so we broke that up into those sort of functional parts of the park for fu, future grant proposals. It, it's important when you're looking at your cost estimates, if you kind of look at the, like, the line I know for off-leash dog area, you'll see a lower number than I'm showing here on the screen. What's very important to consider is we have a contingency at the bottom of the cost estimate. And that's a very common, especially on a planning level, cost estimate to have a pretty good contingency in there. Because none of these spaces have, spaces have been designed in detail, this contingency is covering all, all the, the, the nuts and bolts we aren't, we aren't fully articulating in the cost estimate. So just important to add that contingency to any one of those little areas of the cost estimate. I, I think we're probably all surprised that this has added up to about $5 million total. So, you know, there's a lot of good ideas in here, but I think, you know, obviously phasing and grant proposals, et cetera, would be part of the process to move any of this forward. I do want to say too, we, we tried to be very honest and forthright with this cost estimate. These are not lowball numbers. These are numbers that are probably kind of in the middle of what it might cost to build these things. But there are opportunities probably to do some value engineering on any one of these features and bring down the cost just, just a bit. But we didn't, we, these are not like the skimpiest numbers that we could come up with. These are, these are pretty good, healthy numbers for what this will likely cost. Also thinking about none of these projects will move forward for a couple of years. So there would be escalation in prices over time, regardless of, of inflation. That's just always there's some escalation. So that summarizes the cost estimate. And then just next steps are, our next step is to finalize the preferred conceptual site plan with any of your feedback here today. And then we are preparing a summary report and that is our final deliverable for this phase of the project. So thank you very much. I appreciate your patience. That was a lot of information and we've been working on this since last fall. So I'm going to compact it all into 20 minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So for tonight, we have three options. Option one is to approve the resolution adopting the Meldrum Bar Site Plan as presented. Two is to approve it with modifications and three is to not approve it at all. A lot of work has been gone into this fabulous job. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary Stumble.
All right. So Counselor Garland, ten questions?
So just so you know, my background here is I started on part, on the Parks Board. And this Meldrum Bar Site Plan has been in my head for about seven years. So I do have some, I love this plan. I just had some questions.
Okay, sure.
So I'm looking at the four ball fields and then there are some little white. What are those supposed to be? Are they supposed to be volleyball, pickleball, soccer?
The white lines, those are the soccer fields. That's the soccer, that's the current soccer field arrangement as we understand it from, from the youth soccer folks.
Okay.
And I forgot to mention, the site plan does propose some safety netting in between the ball fields. Because we did not space out the ball fields differently. We've proposed safety netting. We heard from the youth sports folks that, that would be a very helpful improvement. Where the ball fields are kind of crammed together there.
Okay, I was kind of sorry that we didn't get in there a snack shack of some sort. In order for us to be a competitive park to host bigger ball events. I, that's something that we just can't not have. So I'm really sorry that we didn't see, we, you know, I thought there'd be one right smack dab in the middle of those three fields. And it would be a bathroom and a snack shack and maybe even a storage facility. And I do see that you have a storage facility off onto the left. I'm just wondering if that's kind of far away from the work that we are asking our ball field teams to do. But I do think it's important that they, there is a facility there because to wait for public works to come down with equipment so that they can make the fields ready. That's not fun when you have to be out there on Saturday morning at six o'clock, trying to get a field or two ready for a ballgame. I think it's important that the equipment that you need is there. Anticipate what you need and have it ready to go. So I'm, I'm, that, that's kind of concerning to me. But my biggest concern is that Meldrum Bar is 87.4 acres. And nowhere on this site is there room for a park host, two park hosts. We, I've talked about it and talked about it and talked about it. And I know for a fact that if we had park hosts down there, like Oregon City has all over their parks, we would not have the maintenance problems that we have. When you have people there physically to open and close that park at the designated times. We will eliminate and/or reduce our problems down there tenfold. There's just, and, and I, I just can't stress enough, 87 acres. And we don't have somebody down there full-time. That's just, that's not even thinking forward. You close down that, you close down that park from a, you know, a, a maybe an evening with music or something and somebody's got to be there. And it, and it doesn't have to be our police force. It doesn't have to be paying our public works overtime. It just has to be somebody that's willing to walk the park or drive their little cart around like they do in every other state park. I just don't, I can't see having this park plan without having park watchers. And in my opinion, the easiest way to do that is to have park hosts. I know people that have done it for years. They're good people and you have to put some trust out there, but it can happen. So, and then I had one more question. Oh, how? I, I'm not even sure if it matters. You've got a spot here for the sports field equipment storage. It looks smaller than a bathroom. You can't even fit a tractor in there.
Yeah, it's a storage container.
It's a storage container. So have you, and the ball teams have agreed with you that that's a big enough facility for them? It is Darren's giving me a head nod. Okay, then I'm all good. Oh, one, one other thing. The parking lot, this side of the children's course does not have the lines, which tells me it's not in being improved. Am I right in saying that?
The, let's see, the, the parking, the waterfront parking lot there. The viewpoint, that would be improved. Yes, that parking lot would be made of, it'd be pulled back from the edge. And it, it actually, you're right, that plan view, it does not have lines in our little sketch. It does have some lines in it.
It does. I only say that because it's over here, it says formalized parking areas, which would have led me to believe that that would remain the way it is. And we definitely want to improve that parking for, mostly for visibility. Cause it's not an, it's, it's a kind of a, you know, it's a congested parking spot. So on Saturday mornings, when there's the golfers and the ball field kids and things like that, and there's kids running all over the place. I think that, that a little bit more structure would be a much safer thing for people.
Counselor Garland, on the schematic design, it shows it on the?
I know. Yeah, I know.
I, I think we could have chosen a better term than formalize the parking. What we meant by that was actually adding striping and, and making it a formal, a more formal parking lot with drive aisles and, and.
Right. So I just, I like to make sure that everything, the expectations that we're looking for are there because you can ask, you can ask for them later.
Right.
If it's not on the site plan, you kind of get turned down a lot. So we want to make sure it's all there. So I think that's it. I wanted to thank you so much for taking into account the, the beauty of our park. It is, in my opinion, the single most reason that people come from outside of our area. And it needs to be made the best park that we can make it for everyone who wants to be there. And I think that we're getting there.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Counselor Garland, on the one plan, it shows that, that turnout, which is where we were talking about putting a park host, that one little.
Turnout. Oh, I guess I wasn't looking at the other one.
Yeah. So that, that area is still there. Yeah. So that's still there.
And I was actually, when I had envisioned a park host, a park host, because I would never leave somebody down there by themselves if it was up to me. My thought was that point where, to the left of the bathrooms, to the left of that big tree that's down there. And the reason that I say that is when you pull into the park and you see two trailers sitting there, you know that you're being watched. And for some people, unfortunately, they need to be watched. So.
All right. Counselor Todd.
I just turned my page here. Okay. So no, I got it. Thank you. In looking at the bathroom down by Doll Beach Park. That's an expensive bathroom. Is that because everything would have to be brought in down there? Cause it's like half a million dollars, right?
Yes. Public restrooms cost a lot from scratch.
Okay.
And, and we also, I wasn't sure about the utilities down there. So I, we assumed there'd be some site work, water lines, sewer lines. So there would be some site work that goes along with that. So it's both the bathroom and some site work to make it work.
Okay.
But unfortunately, public restrooms are quite expensive.
What, what would that like, for that price range, what would you expect to get? Like you're, you're talking, are we talking composting toilets? Are we talking flushing toilets?
Flushing toilets.
Okay, like.
Yes, flushing toilets.
I just, composting toilets aren't horrible. I mean, they're, they're done in lots of parks. So are we talking multiple stalls?
You know, probably, probably a, a men's and women's room or, or two, you know, all gender rooms. You know, not, not a major, this is not a major facility.
Okay, it's not a major.
A few stalls, a fairly simple design. There are some, some vendors in Oregon, like, for example, the company Romtech sells a pre-engineered restrooms to park districts across the state. You know, possibly something like a Romtech type facility.
Barton Park has that. I believe they have one of those. Okay. Other question, can you give me a visual of a size for the stage that you're talking about? Because you're saying that it's not going to be a huge stage.
Right.
How many feet are you, it is going to fit in that spot?
Oh gosh, you know what? And I have a visual in my mind. I wish I could convey it to you.
Okay. Okay, I'm trying to take it in.
No, probably a stage about as wide as, as your desk system here.
Okay.
Going back 15 feet or so.
Okay.
So maybe like a four or five person, you know, acoustic band could be on there. Or, or it would not seem oversized if one person was standing there, you know, doing an award ceremony.
Okay, sounds good.
And a small roof to keep the, the sun and, and the rain off of the performances.
Okay. And my only other question is, so next to the Cottonwood Grove where the RC track and BMX bikes are now, just going back to native planting there, is that what the plan is?
That would be the proposal is to regrade, to smooth out the, the earthwork there and then replant with native plants. Yes, and kind of turn it back to kind of building off the Cottonwood Grove.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Hartman.
Thank you. I want to say I appreciate you bringing up Counselor Garland, the snack shack and the park hosts. And that would be really awesome to see that added there, or at least I have a discussion around it. I had, it feels very nitpicky, but on the sport fields improvement section, in other places, it has benches costed out. And I noticed that there wasn't any in that area in terms of like bleachers for the families to sit on. Is that something that is just, we're just going to use the existing what's there or?
That was the thought, but that, that, that doesn't mean that's what has to move forward. There's not a lot of room in there to add new, new bleachers, potentially some new benches. You know, there, those fields are already squeezed in. There's already, I, I already have some concerns about some of the ADA access back in there with some of the clearance, the horizontal clearances between built features. That could be something that potentially could be, could be added in that area.
Okay, but we are anticipating just to utilize what we already have.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And I just was curious about that second survey. Were those, the respondents, were they unique respondents from the first?
I do not know that. I don't think I would have a way to know that.
No worries. The other thing in terms of adding to the site plan, as Counselor Garland noted, if it's not on there, it doesn't happen. Adding in like built-in trash cans, like where our trash cans are going to be throughout the park. Right now they're very minimal. I'm sure we experience that every weekend. So I, I don't know if that needs to be added, but at least noting where those are going to be as we improve this. We want more people to come. That would be awesome. And then it was just a, a thought and a concern as we want to bring in festivals. Having, oh, like in terms of Fire Marshal, as festivals come here and only a one entryway and exit way. And if we've looked at that, does that bypass lane allow for that? We had a festival a couple of weekends ago or a small one and traffic was horrible going in there. So just talking about that, if we've looked at that in terms of like, if someone does want to get a permit for an event, would that even get approved to having only a one entry point?
Right. I, I can't speak to, we, we did not work with the Fire Marshal on additional emergency access. My first thought is potentially that Jensen Road Bike Path could be an emergency.
Okay, okay.
That's on the EVAC.
Is that okay?
Oh, is it? Okay, great.
That was all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Tracy.
Counselor Todd covered the, the bathroom expense, three fifty, three fifty. I, I, I understand what, I understand the constraints you're under. It's just, it's still a sticker shock for any of us doing any of these projects. That's it. It's a huge cost for the standalone building.
Yeah. So. And, and just to be clear, you know, this is just our estimate.
Yeah, I understand. And you guys, you don't know what the utilities are down there. I understand that. I mean, if you're trenching, it's going to be more costly, but it's still, it's going to always hit us with, with that particular item.
Yes.
I don't think we even know what's down there.
There is no water or sewer in that area currently.
Yep. All right, Counselor Alexander.
So I might understand that we're not gonna, we have to go ahead and approve this site plan to be able to go out for grants. Is that what's, I mean, cause I'm, it's, it's all beautiful. It's expensive price tag. Where's the money coming from?
Right, right.
That's what people want to know, I think.
Generally, in the grant process, the, the granting agencies want to know that you have an approved master plan that you're working from. That, that there's a, a long-term vision and then they'll let you kind of break out pieces of that master plan and fund those separately.
So it won't get all done at once, just because we have a master plan. And they'll, they'll pick out pieces or we'll pick out pieces in, in priority.
That's correct. I think it would be a phased approach. I don't know of any grant programs that, that can dole out $5 million. You know, the, one of the bigger ones in the state is the Oregon State Parks Local Government Grant Program. You know, I think they might go up to 700,000 or so. So really it'd kind of be, any one of these projects could move forward under that approach, but, but probably only one or two at a time.
So we're going to make our new grant writer earn her money.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Counselor Ripley.
I have no questions.
All right. All my questions got answered and I've been part of the Parks Board going through all of these steps to get where we are today. And you've done such a great job. There's been so much thought put into this. It's really exciting to see. So we need to make a decision on which of the three options we want to move forward. Again, those are on page 10 dash one, options at the very bottom, one, two, and three. To approve the resolution as presented, approve it with modifications, or to not approve it at all. So I would just.
Right, yeah.
Sorry. Say that again. So that we could, can we make a list and then?
Of modifications that?
That people might like to see. I mean, obviously we would all have to agree on what, on whether or not those modifications. I mean, I have a wish list, but that's not, that doesn't mean that everybody up here agrees with my wish list. So.
Right. And we have to remember that this isn't just our decision. We have, this has been vetted through the community. So there's a lot of people that have weighed in on these conceptual plans.
Right.
Do we have to finalize the modifications today or is this something that we can?
We could push it off, but it would be really nice to, to get something on the books so that we could start going after grants. Cause the, the timelines for grants are coming up. Usually it's November and February.
So I like, I'm going to start.
Okay.
Okay. So I like the fact that the bathrooms are, the new restrooms are not called out to be anything specific. Again, that would help us with alternatives. But some of the ones you mentioned, I'm all about that. I would like to number one, have the park hosts down there with facilities in order for them to be able to live. I, I really believe presence is the way to go. I would also like to enlarge the sports field equipment storage container. It seems like it might be a small one. We need to have a bigger one. But I, I would also like to have that allowed to be moved. I'm not sure that that's the best place for it. That's my personal opinion. And then my other item was the snack shack. So the snack shack, I believe should go smack dab in between one, two, and three, so that everybody can use it. And quite honestly, I'd like to see a bathroom there. And the reason that I'd like to see that there is because it's in a more visi- visual place. And I, again, when people are being watched, they tend to do less destructive things. Unfortunately, as I had said before, people have to be watched sometimes. So those are my two things, maybe three a little bit, or just two, I guess. So.
So park hor- park host, I know that we talked about that on the Parks and Board level. But did that ever make it to any of your questions when you were doing surveys and outreach?
No, it did not.
Okay. All right. So knowing that, do we still want to put that as a modification?
Yes.
Okay. And then snack shack, those come on wheels too. Isn't that what they've been doing? It's not a permanent fixture. They bring it, a trailer in. I think if you provide snacks anywhere down there, they will come.
So I just, I just think to have a brick and more, a small. I just, it, I just think to have a brick and more, a small brick and mortar that, um, you know, if you're going to have a big tournament, I'm not sure who else here from the, from, uh, the ball fields and the soccer fields, you're going to throw a big event down there. Your group has spent weeks and months planning that event. And the more money that you can make from alternatives besides just charging your teams to come in and play, the better off your, your group, whoever's putting it on, uh, Gladstone Group, you, you could bring even other groups. But if you don't have something for someone to do something in or with, then it, it doesn't matter. It, it's always about fundraising for all of these groups, and we need to make it as simply as possible for them. Um, for all of them. We want the kids to come. We want the kids to have somewhere to go to the bathroom. We want the kids to have a popsicle. We want them to come to the park and use them. And we need to build a facility that warrants that. I'm very passionate about this, these parks. Have you figured that out?
All right. So then we have, are there any other modifications people would like to add to that list?
Just the trashcans, if it's necessary.
I don't think we need to put it on the.
It's just the built-in, like the ones that we have at, like Max Patterson.
Yeah, I, I don't think we need to put that on the plan where the trashcans are going to go. It's going to be pretty obvious where.
It's going to happen though.
Yeah, we just chose the trashcans last night, so.
Good.
Yeah, we're good. It's all good. All right. So then we have three options. Option one, again, is to approve it as presented. Number two is to include Councilor Garlington's modifications of a park host, enlarge the sports equipment shed, and a brick and mortar snack shack, or three is to not approve it at all. Yes.
Did you get confirmation that the shed is big enough? I just am curious.
Yeah. Excuse me, it will, it will be larger than what they currently use. Um, what they currently use, they put out on Jensen Road right now. It'll be a much bigger container than that. Um, they were fine with what we, we had proposed before, which is basically the same thing, just longer.
Okay.
But, I mean, I, I can see where, where you're coming from on that. And then as far as moving that, that's kind of a challenge, because it's not something you just want to have right out in the open where everybody can see it. So you've got to kind of make it fit in with everything that's involved down there. That's partially why the location was chosen to be there.
Had a sight out of mind.
Right. Okay.
Does that change your feelings?
Well, the building itself is a necessity.
Yeah.
Um, I think that, like everything else that's on this, it all comes down to money. Who's got it? Where are we getting it from? Who's selling raffle tickets to pay for it? Um, how much match dollars do we have to have? Who's going to take on what project? Who's going to make it their four-year plan and life investment to get some of this restoration done? I, I'm aware, this is just step one, so.
All right. So we have three options. Would someone like to make a motion? Oh, I asked if anybody had any other modifications. So we have the three options. So someone should make a motion on one of the options. Do, do you want me to read the options again?
No, I can read them right here. I just thought we were all going to, I mean, option, I, I, I moved that we approved, uh, the resolution adopting the Meldrum Bar Park Site Plan as presented.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll say it again.
Motion was made by Councilor Alexander and seconded by Councilor Ripley to go with option one, which is approving the resolution, adopting the Meldrum Bar Site Plan as presented. Any discussion?
So what is your opposition to, to having watch people down there to watch our park?
No opposition. Just ask my question about, none of this is going to happen until we get a site plan and we get some money or some grants. So we can always add a park host. You can always add a park host.
No, no.
I think, I know in Oregon City, I know a guy that worked for Clackamas Park for a long time. He works for Camby now. And it's real easy to add a park host. It really is. I watched him do it.
But it needs to be in the site plan in order for anything to happen.
It can be on the, um, strategic plan, work plan for parks and rec, if you want to do it that way.
Nope. I want it on the site plan.
Okay.
If everybody, if, if we have, if there is enough people that say yes, we can add it, but you know, I have these Christmas lists. I'm going to ask for them.
All right. Well, we have a motion and a second to go with option number one. Any other discussion?
Um, I'm just having a hard time going through, um, sort of piecemealing all of this, sort of together. When we have a very good plan, I'm only concerned about the park hosts. Everything else, I think, is fine. Um, is that a possibility to add that as the strategic plan? People, yes.
Yeah, that, that can be done with that.
And it doesn't have to be on the.
And to be honest with you, there's plenty of room there to add that. It's not going to affect anything.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, part of the plan was, is to not really put anything in the area that Councilor Garlington is talking about, just for future, if that's what people wanted in the future. But i- it's really not that big of a deal to add. I mean, it's just some pavement and hookups is really what it comes down to, and the, uh, all the sewer water and all that stuff is already there with the restroom building. So it is really not a large project to add that, uh, in that area.
Is it a problem not having it on the site plan, though, to go, to move forward with that? It's not, I mean, I'm, I'm talking more like from a legal sort of view of how we move forward. Hello, attorney?
Good evening. So you can go either way, honestly. Um, the, the advantage of having it in the site plan is that it's easier to point to for the grant processes you were talking about earlier tonight. Um, and so, you know, if it's not that expensive a project, maybe you're not so concerned about that, but it is certainly an advantage to have it on there. Um, if you don't have it on there, it doesn't mean it's precluded from ever being added and being worked on. Um, but, you know, there are some advantages to having it on there. So it comes down to, you know, I don't have a straightforward answer to say, yes, you should absolutely do it. It comes down to, you know, do you want to, you know, add a little advantage, maybe get a little extra money through the grant process, which we don't even know exists, so.
That's a typical city attorney. It depends.
I was going to say, I was going to say.
I'd never use the word risk, though, so you got to give me some credit there.
Right.
But I would suggest there's nothing that would restrict us from in the future adding a camp post, especially if our police chief says this would be added security to have down there. Maybe we don't need to hire out a security company anymore to do that. I don't foresee the city applying for grant funds for a park host. So I, I don't think it needs to be on the site plan, but I think it's something that can be incorporated down the road.
So just two, two things I want to bring up. One, if we're going to put in plumbing for a bathroom, that would be the perfect time to put in plumbing for a, a park host. And number two, if we're going out for money and/or, uh, money, like, let's say we dream big and go a, and ask the Meyer Trust for money. We've got a grant. We're going to ask the Meyer Trust to meet us halfway. And one of the things that we can do is say, we can build it, and we can build it safer, because we have park hosts down at our park as watchdogs in our park. It's not going to get ruined every darn week. And we spend all of our park funds cleaning up and restoring what could have not been broken in the first place.
Right. But you're confident it's something that could be added without a problem?
Yeah, it, it, it's really not an issue. There's already plumbing there, like I said.
Yes.
And, and power and everything. It's just a matter of connecting into it and moving it to where we need to have it.
All right. Any other questions? Tammy, could you draw a call vote, please?
Councilor Ripley?
Yes.
Councilor Alexander?
Yes.
Councilor Tracy?
All right.
Councilor Hartman?
Hi.
Councilor Todd?
Yes.
Councilor Garlington?
Well, I said I'd be open to the discussion up here, and I'm kind of sorry that we aren't going to, um, formalize protecting our park, but I like your idea, so, yes.
Mayor Stipple?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you to all of you. Really appreciate your time this evening.
All right. Um, next is item number eleven, which is the city administrator employment contract discussion staff.
Good evening, council. Again, Chad Jacobs from the city attorney's office. So as I presented to you all previously, uh, via email, is that the city administrator's contract is expiring at the end of the year. And so you have some decisions to make at some point, whether to renegotiate a new contract, to extend the current contract, um, or to allow the current, current contract to expire. The legal issue of concern is that if you are going to allow the current contract to expire, you have to provide a hundred and twenty days' notice, or else you have to pay, uh, for every day beyond a hundred and twenty day, less than a hundred and twenty days, that you didn't provide notice. So, for example, if you wait until the end of the year to provide notice to say that you're not allowed the contract to term, to terminate, you have to then provide compensation for that entire period that you didn't provide the hundred and twenty days' notice. The hundred and twenty days for the end of the year is going to, um, basically come up at the end of the month, which is why we're bringing this to you tonight. So your options basically are to do nothing, if you don't want to do anything, and, you know, wait and make a decision later down the road, knowing that, you know, if you decide to allow the contract to terminate, um, you will have to pay some additional money. Um, another option would be to actually provide notice tonight that, or, you know, by the end of the month, that you, you want the contract to terminate. Or another option would be to say that you want to, um, ha, have someone negotiate with the city administrator, uh, a new contract far beyond the end of the year. And to do that, you would usually delegate authority to either one member of the council, to our office, or to your HR representative to negotiate with the city administrator and bring back to you all a proposed contract. Um, uh, uh, the last option would be to do something in between all that, you know, if you wanted to do some sort of performance evaluation or something else before you make a decision, that you can absolutely do as well. Again, the, the key legal issue is that if you have this hundred and twenty day deadline, and if you don't provide notice by the hundred and twenty dead, twenty day deadline, it may mean that you have to pay some extra money. So that's why we wanted to bring this to you tonight. Um, yeah, I'm bringing this to you on behalf of the HR director. Ultimately, this is you all administer the contract with city administrator. It's a contract between the council and the city admin, and city administrator. So it's up to you all to decide what to do. We just were concerned that this was not on your radar, so we wanted to bring it to your attention. Um, we don't have a recommendation. Um, you know, it's, it's not really our place to make that recommendation. It's really for you all to sort of decide with the city administrator, the best path forward. Obviously, um, any change or extension, whatever you want to do, would have to be agreed upon by the city administrator. We don't get to just dictate to her that she has to stay, although some of us may want her to. Um, that's ultimately her call. Um, so that's the issue for you tonight. I'm happy to answer questions about the contract or help you with the discussion in any way possible. But as I said, ultimately, this is sort of your contract to administer, and so we just want to make sure that you have the opportunity to talk about it.
Right. I had one concern about it, and that was the review, because I believe that we are required to do a review periodically, and when was the last time that we did one?
So I believe you amended your contract, and I can pull it up real quick, um, recently to not actually require any review. It'd just be a review that you guys mutually agreed upon with the city administrator. So it's really up to you all to decide whether to do that. I don't recall, and perhaps the city administrator, someone on the council, actually recalls the last time you did a, any type of review process. I don't know the answer to that question. I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, Councilor Garlington?
Um. What am I?
Questions, concerns, thoughts?
I don't have any questions. I am not concerned about our relationship with Administrator Betts. I think she's doing a really good job, and I would entertain that we should figure out how to make a new contract with her, if that's what we need to do, and so far as a, um, a review goes, I, I think that everybody is, should have that. Um, that's to protect the employer and the employee. So I think somehow we should get that in there. I don't know what all that entails, but I, I think that we should do it right.
All right, Councilor Todd?
I feel like we did a review in the last, oh, COVID, yeah, that all of a sudden, I was just like, I, I feel like we had done one of those. Um, I would love to extend um, Administrator Betts contracted, hope that she'll stay. So whatever way we need to make that happen, if we need to have somebody work on that, I'm fine. Um, I don't think that I'd be working on that, but, um, yeah, I, I want to move forward and hope that she'll stay.
And a review? Are you pro con?
I feel like every day is a review with, with, you know, that, you know, I just sort of feel like we see her work on, um, a regular basis. I don't know what that would look like, and I don't, and I, I'm uncomfortable because we don't have anything in place, which maybe that's what we need to work on too, is that we sort of are make, we make the rules that those would go along with some of these things. And so I think maybe that, what does it look like? What does it look like in the past? That, that sort of thing.
We did one, I think it was, the last big one was Eric Swanson, I believe. So we did have something in place.
Okay.
Yeah. Councilor Hartman?
Um, I am also fine with a review, as Councilor Garlington was saying, to have that just on file. Um, and I would love to also negotiate a new contract.
All right, Councilor Tracy?
All right. I think we should go forward with negotiating a new contract, and frankly, um, sitting in a city that didn't do anything with infrastructure for, what, thirty-six years, we're sitting inside of the review here. I'm seeing streets being paved. I'm seeing us moving forward with park projects. I think, uh, City Administrator Betts has brought a lot to the city. Um, so I'm fine without a review. I think, again, we're sitting in the middle of a review. Thank you.
Councilor Alexander?
I'd go with the review and then a new negotiation.
Councilor Ripley?
I think we should do a review and before any decisions are made.
Okay. So, sounds like the majority said yes for a review and then negotiate a contract. So would somebody like to make a motion, please? Well, I think we do. You want us to make a motion to move forward, or you just want us to give you direction?
You're back.
Direction is fine. I don't know that you need a motion. The, the question is, it, just to clarify, it sounds like you want to negotiate a new contract, assuming Administrator Betts is amenable to that, and then, um, also establish some sort of review process.
Yes.
So the question is, do you want to delegate authority to any one individual to spearhead that? You know, do you want our office to do that? Do you want your HR representative to do that? Do you want to appoint a member of the council to do that? I would not recommend that you appoint more than one member of the council, because that forms a committee and public meeting issues and all that kind of stuff. So if you want to have someone on the council be involved, I would just advise that you select one person to do so.
Is there anyone that's interested in doing that?
I'm not.
Councilor Garlington? I think she is.
Add one more thing. I just, I mean, I would love to. I just, sorry.
And again.
If somebody else would take it on, that would be lovely.
If you prefer, you know, our officer, the HR representative can sort of staff that and, you know, lead the negotiations and either have one of you be the contact, or just bring it back to the council as a body, whatever you prefer, if there's not someone who's, has a desire to do that.
So Chad, I, I would assume that what you're doing is you're constructing the review process. The review would go out, you'd be soliciting information from a number of different folks who would be involved, who have direct working relationships with the city administrator. So you're not taking on, I'm, just to clarify, your office and the HR, um, director wouldn't be taking on the review themselves. They're going out to solicit information to get a review throughout the community.
So just to clarify, uh, one, one aspect would be negotiating the new contract with City Administrator Betts, seeing what changes she wants to the contract, you know, bring it to you all for consideration. The second aspect would be sort of leading the review process. And the way that typically works is that you have a, a sit-down basically with you all and the city administrator, talk about what you want the process to be. So exactly what you were describing, do you want that sort of process? Do you want a three sixty review? Do you want something more formal? And you all have that discussion. You agree upon what that review process should look like. And then as part of that process, you decide how to implement that, whether you hire a consultant to do that, there's someone on the council leads that, whether you use our office or your HR administrator. So none of that would be decided tonight. You know, we would just sort of facilitate that process to allow you all to have that discussion, to make that determination.
Okay, thank you, because I think that it could get misconstrued as you, you doing the review or the HR director doing the review. Thanks.
No, ultimately, uh, the city administrator reports to you all, so you're the ones who are going to do the ultimate review based on whatever type of input you want to receive from others.
All right. My only comment is I would like to see somebody on city council, one person be a part of that process. So somebody needs to volunteer or get a.
Well, there doesn't have to be somebody on city council.
I think it's probably.
I mean, I'm just saying, I mean, it wasn't a consensus that there had to be. So, um, there doesn't have to be. I, I don't want to.
Okay.
Don't have the time for that, so.
I'll volunteer to work with the city administrator or with the city attorney's office and, and do that if nobody else wants to.
Thank you.
Set up, tee up the process with you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So you have the direction from us? All right. Next is item number twelve, to consider approval of an IGA, intergovernmental agreement with the cities of Oregon City and St. Helens for judicial services. Staff?
So you get me again. Congratulations. So this issue, uh, thank you for adding it to the agenda at the last minute. This issue is coming out of some litigation in another city, um, related to municipal court judges and their ability to serve as a municipal court. and their ability to serve as a municipal court judge in multiple jurisdictions. While we think it's proper for individuals to do so, there is a state statute that specifically says that cities can provide municipal court judicial services to each other through an IGA as a process to sort of alleviate any risk there. And so what we've done is we've worked with St. Helens and Oregon City, where your Judge Lindgren also serves as the municipal court judge, to come up with this IGA to sort of take advantage of that state statute to resolve any of this legal ambiguity and take this issue off the table. Because of the outstanding pending litigation, we wanted to bring this to you as soon as possible, which is why we added to added it to the agenda at the last minute. The IGA basically sets forth a process where St. Helens will be the lead city and basically quote unquote, providing judicial services. But as you see through the IGA, each city will continue to be responsible for administering its own municipal court, receiving all the revenue from that court, having an individual contract with the judge, any pro temp judges, any prosecutors, et cetera. Basically, not much is going to change, other than the fact that we're going to have an IGA in place and take advantage of the protection of the state statute to resolve this legal ambiguity. So that's the purpose of bringing the IGA forward to you tonight. It's my understanding, this is also being presented to St. Helens and to Oregon City in the very near future. Under the IGA, should other cities decide to use Judge Lindgren as their municipal judge, they can join the IGA. Likewise, if we or any other city decide to, and the relationship with Judge Lindgren, were able to get out of the IGA without the whole thing falling apart. So there's procedures set up in the IGA for that. That's the basic outline and the reason behind it. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, we'll start with Councilor Garlington.
I only had one question on number two in the termination. It it didn't say that there was a timeline on the notice in writing. Is that, is that something that you would normally ask somebody in a professional job such as this for?
So that's all going to be determined by the individual contracts with Judge Lindgren. So we didn't want to have anything in there that would bind each party, because each party will negotiate that separately with the judge.
Perfect, thank you.
Councilor Todd.
I have no questions at this time.
Councilor Hartman.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Councilor Tracy.
No questions.
Councilor Alexander.
No, thanks.
Councilor Ripley.
No questions.
And I don't have any questions either. Would someone make a motion then? Oh, hold on a second. We have a speaker. Yes.
Mayor, we do have one speaker, and that is Steve Johnson.
Steve Johnson, Gladstone resident. My question was mostly just that the charter requires the municipal court judge to report to the city council. It was not clear from the IGA, and without a staff report or a resolution, it was difficult to determine that. So I'd like to make sure that the municipal court judge, even with his IGA, continues to report directly to the city council on Gladstone issues. Thank you.
Yeah, as I mentioned before, the the language of the IGA requires each jurisdiction to continue to completely run its own municipal court, so nothing would change with that regard.
All right. So any other questions? Would someone make a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we enter an IGA between the cities of Gladstone, Oregon City, and St. Helens for judicial services.
Oh, second. Motion was made by Councilor Alexander and seconded by Councilor Todd. Do we have any other discussion questions, concerns? I don't see anything. Could you do a roll call vote, please, Tammy?
Councilor Tracy.
Hi.
Councilor Alexander.
Yes.
Councilor Ripley.
Yes.
Councilor Hartman.
Hi.
Councilor Todd.
Yes.
Councilor Garlington.
Yes.
Mayor Stempel.
Yes, IGA has been approved. All right, do we have any business carried forward?
I have nothing further. Thank you.
All right, next is business from the audience. Each person has three minutes to speak. Our governing body takes the input of our citizens into consideration. However, in order to comply with Oregon Public Meetings laws, this isn't a time for dialogue, but instead a time for us to listen. Our city administrator and clerk are taking notes in case an item requires further action. First person, please. First person is Debbie Lum. Get push the the button.
Yeah. Hello, mayor and some of the city council. I'm here to talk about this witch hunt that is going on right now because of my sister and I. I did not harass a concerned citizen. I contacted a member of Antifa, right there sitting, filming me right now, is confirmed Antifa. Vanessa Hartman is Antifa also. Vogies, do you remember Vogies?
No, Lisa? Remember Vogies, a couple, few weeks ago, rubbing your chest up against her, talking about
how she shouldn't, you know, bring her little toys to the Chautauqua Festival? You must have your hands on her. You must control her.
We're talking, get to the
Are we sliding into libel here? I'd like, I'd like the city attorney to weigh in on this. I don't think we open these forums for this.
Okay, you're on a witch hunt for my sister. I, she has no control over me. I contacted a a person that was supposed to be a concerned citizen. I've been dealing with her for years. She's been harassing. All they do is they they constantly cause problems and lie. My problem is I don't like liars. If you lie, I will come after you, all of you, every single
Again, point of order, are we, are we now putting our citizens and our city in a libel position?
No.
You're out here threatening our citizens in an open forum meeting.
I am
You don't get to do this.
I'm making a point. If you lie.
You're threatening citizens.
If you lie.
Can we get somebody to weigh in here?
And and make that lie out. If you don't lie, I don't have a problem with you. But Proud Boys
I think we need to stop.
Are my brothers. The Proud Boys are my brothers. Every time they come here to raise a flag, they, we get harassed. I'm done. I'm done. It's ridiculous. We can't even go out there and raise a flag in this, in the city. It's ridiculous. The real problems are not us. It's not us. It's them. It's you. It's you.
Our citizens beg to differ.
Yeah, I'm sure they do, but you know what? Everyone that I talk to has a different story. Remember that. I'm not going anywhere. Not going anywhere. I'm here to stay. Every time a lie comes out, I'll be there to make sure that I expose it. Every lie. And I'll tell the truth. Every lie that comes out, I will expose it. Remember that. I'm not going anywhere.
The next speaker is Sierra Cook.
I'm sorry, I don't really have to answer to you. Thank you.
You do have to answer publicly.
They voted me in and they can vote me out.
All right, okay, we've got someone up.
Hi, my name is Sierra Cook. I'm a resident of Gladstone. I saw, oh, pardon me. Hi, my name is Sierra Cook. I'm a resident of Gladstone. I saw you mayor and most of council at the Gladstone Community Festival this weekend. What a phenomenal event, I gotta say, like, it was three days of bringing the community together. Volunteers giving countless hours, working into the dark of the night to provide services to our community, to bring together, you know, the the folks who were in the Beat Goes On marching band, like, you know, bringing it together, older Gladstonians, younger Gladstonians, providing services to the city. Bringing everybody together. That's what Gladstone's about. That's the spirit of Gladstone. The spirit of Gladstone is uplifting, supporting, and celebrating each other. And that's what we saw this last weekend at Chautauqua or the Gladstone Community Festival, which is what I should call it. You know, in the months that we have left this year, I know there are some open positions. Some of your seats that you're sitting in will be open again in November. So in the months that we have left, my hope is that our city government can intentionally change the tone at City Hall to reflect that true spirit of Gladstone, because that's why many of us moved here. That's why we're here, is to take advantage of our beautiful parks, to take advantage of our fantastic schools, our small town community feel, support the small businesses on Portland Avenue and elsewhere in the city. That's why we're here. My hope is that the positive momentum of the Gladstone Community Festival can help propel us forward as a community. My ask is that we focus on what brings us together as a community and not what pulls us apart. And then I also want to just thank all of the Rotarians and volunteers who did such a flipping phenomenal job on the Gladstone Community Festival this year. I want to appreciate Councilors Todd and Garlington. I know you guys worked very hard on the parade. I was setting up my booth, so I missed it, but I did hear Elvis from my booth, so I got to enjoy at least a little bit of it. So I hope that we can focus on what we know is the true heart of Gladstone and and use that momentum that we had this weekend to carry us forward and focus on that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is business from the council. We'll start with Councilor Garlington.
I just have a couple of small things. I too would like to thank the Rotarians and the job that they and their volunteers did. Everybody that went down there that called me, I ran into, talked about what a phenomenal day it was for the city and the people, and they just felt like when they were talking about cities coming out of COVID, we did it, and we did it right. And we couldn't have done it right without all of the people that volunteered all of their hours, day. And I know they probably had some long meetings, and you got to beg people to pay for things, and you've got to ask people to volunteer and sit down in the hot sun for four or five hours. And people were called to the task, and they did it, and it was phenomenal. Thank you for asking me to volunteer with you. It was a complete pleasure. I loved being a part of that parade, lining people up, running around, meeting people I had never met before. All of that was just, it was the highlight of my two days. My husband
It's a lot of fun, isn't it? It's sort of weird.
And my husband would say it was the book sale, but if we had to come to one consensus, it truly was the ice cream things. So the other thing I'd like to bring to everyone's attention is that my group, the Friends of Gladstone Nature Park group walked in the parade. And there, I don't know if anybody saw the parade, but there was a lady with us that was in a butterfly costume, and she had signed up to be in the parade by herself and ended up walking with us. Why? Well, we had the Butterfly Hill, and I've been talking about it, and it was fun. She lives at Tuck Willa. She's new here in our community, and that just absolutely made my heart grow tenfold. I I just was so excited about that. So thank you all for welcoming the people that are new to our community and especially those that live on Webster Road, who are clearly an asset to our community. So one, a couple more things. I would like to thank Kim R. Graves Huey for her another great history article in the newspaper. These are always super fun to read. And I'm going to talk a little bit. I'm going to try and bring, I I'm just going to go back to my pushing the volunteerism. I know that all of you volunteer. I know you all spend countless hours, but there's somebody watching us on YouTube that needs a job. So the job this month is the WashCo Bikes Refurbishes redistributes thousands of free rides. This is a group out of the Merrill Hurst campus. And a lot of the people that come there, they've never learned how to work on a bike in their life, but they gave a bike to a child or somebody who needed it. Maybe it was somebody in our own Tuck Willa that needed to have a ride from there to Safeway or there to their doctor's appointment on the bike route. But this, this group of people have come together to do really good things. And if you have a free afternoon, or you know how to work on bikes, or you just need a friend, WashCo Bikes out of Merrill Hurst, and that will be my volunteer push for this month.
Councilor Todd.
I can't follow that. I have nothing. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Councilor Hartman.
I'll just echo the thanks to everyone that was involved in the festival. It was really awesome to bring that back after three years. It was just really beautiful, and you did a great job getting everyone in line. Telling people what to do. It was great. I did want to bring up one thing that I think we probably, everyone in this room and everyone sitting up here received calls about. It it is the issue of homelessness. I, it does stick out like a sore thumb in a, you know, nice suburban town, and I want to really commend and and thank our police force for the efforts that they put into this. And in in talking to some of the folks, the amount of restorative practices that they did and the amount of services, and they they tried, and they they met her and met them with with empathy. I just want to say thank you for that. And what I would love, if you all would entertain, is to add to a work session to to talk about this, for us to hear from your crew. What are the barriers that you are facing? So that we are proactive about this situation, because I think we can all agree that it's not going to go away. And and what are the, like, what, how are our hands tied? And I think it would be good for an education session also for folks in the community to understand how our hands are tied, that you, everyone in the community came together. Another great thing about Gladstone, we had businesses, teachers, educators, everyone coming to help this particular person. And unfortunately, those resources were not received. And what do we do? Like, what are our next steps? And so I would love, if we can, to add it to a work session where we can hear from your team, we can hear from staff. Is it a county issue? Is it a city issue? What can we do to be proactive, because it's just not going to go away? And I would just, I would love to 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 just have an open discussion about that, so that we can, we can also help in that regard too. So that's all. Thank you.
Councilor Tracy.
Chief, once again, I'm going to address the police department this month. You guys handled an incredibly sensitive case. It was an international case and turned out, you know, in reading the report and the finality of that case, I can't imagine how how you all kept everything tight and did what you did and did it so successfully with the safe return. And I think, I think this is a story that's missed out there. I think we, there's a little local press on it. I noticed there's some press up in Canada too. But I think your department deserves a lot of accolades for how well you handled that case. There's a lot of details and moving pieces there. So congratulate your staff. Congratulate your mutual aid agencies. You guys did a fantastic job with that. And what I really appreciated was at the very beginning, you all probably had a sense of what was happening, and you kind of kept it on the down low and were able to maneuver through a very small community to catch a high profile case. Congratulations. I just can't, yeah, after reading the report, I can't say enough about how well you guys performed on that case. Yep.
Councilor Alexander.
Just that I had a lot of people from out of town. They said they've been to a lot of the festivals. This was the best one. Police did do a good job. I talked to one in particular, salaried officer, who I saw put in many, many hours. And on salary, that's not fun to do, I know. So I appreciate that. And then, and then I also want to know about one. I I saw a lady walk around picking up trash, getting exercise and sun, and I asked her about it, and she said she's one of nine people, and and there's a thing called adoptoneblock.org. And there's nine people in Gladstone that do it and have blocks already. They go pick up trash, get some sun, get some exercise. So if you wanted to go to that, www.adoptoneblock.org is a great thing. And then also, we got the mom and daughter from from the Cross family donated two very, very old, beautiful chairs with springs and oil.
Free chairs.
Well, three, the other one's not beautiful and has springs. But the the two are really, really nice, and they're in the back.
It's beautiful.
If you want to see, it's an old wooden chair. But anyway, it was, it's neat that we got, what they gave us, and they have a whole bunch more for us to to put, and that's why we need to also bring up and talk about some kind of storage facility that's climate controlled somewhere and, you know, for the historical society. We're getting a lot of think plans and pictures and books and chairs. I mean, you know, these are going to go in the lobby with a rope around them by the desk, but we could use some kind of storage. So if anyone's got any ideas, we're open to them. Thank you.
The loft in the fire department building in here would be perfect, just throwing it out there. All right, Councilor Ripley.
I would definitely agree with the loft or the whole building. I know there's historic stuff in town that's stored all over the place, in people's basements, attics, underneath their porches. And if we want to keep it, we need to take care of it. Chautauqua Festival or the community festival, I don't think I've seen that many people at the parade in years. There was at least the first half of that parade. I I don't think I've ever seen it quite that thick. You'd see it more consistent throughout the the whole route, but that was, there was a lot of people in town.
Yeah, I ran at Yeah, I ran out of candy about a third of the way through because there were so many kids. Or your husband was, I kept throwing him and it kept landing in his lap for some reason. Don't know how that happened. All right, the food pantry is open from three to six. We've now bumped it to six o'clock so that more people have access after they get off work. And that's on Thursdays at the Hillside Christian Fellowship Church of Glen Echo in the back portable building. Currently, we need volunteers, just like everybody else does, and we would love to expand our hours more, but we need more volunteers. And we need donations of things like pasta, spaghetti sauce, cereal, snacks. Because we're also going to be helping the schools with their snack program as soon as school goes, gets back into session. Yeah, yeah. We will take anything you can give, especially your time. And if you would like to volunteer, let me know and I'll connect you with Alex Van Pelt, who's our director. And if you'd like to donate, our prep crew is there on Wednesdays from two to 3:30. And then the pantry is open Thursdays, like I said, from three to six, so you can bring donations then as well. We're there prepping two to 3:30 on Wednesdays and then the hours opener, three to 6:00 PM. And just so you all know, we've connected with Tuck Willa and we're supplying food to 10 residents now and hopefully we'll expand that. And then as Council Alexander said, the granddaughters of Harvey Cross donated three beautiful antique rocking chairs. And we'll have them on display and out here in the lobby. The Clackamas County Coordinating Committee, referred to as C4, is focusing 100% on the state highway plan and tolling. This week alone, and it's only Tuesday, I had three meetings yesterday on tolling. So I mean, we are on this so hot, so heavy. We actually have the Oregon Transportation Commission Chair coming at our next C4 meeting to hopefully answer some questions. We've been able to get a 45-day extension on public comment, so please comment, comment strongly. We, I have not talked to one person yet that is pro tolling. And for some reason, there's people out there that are saying that we are all pro tolling, so we need to get the word out. Let's see here. Oh, and we also created a formal diversion impacts group. So now we're being able to bring that into the conversation because for Gladstone, that's going to be our biggest hit is the diversion. And we have absolutely no way of dealing with it right now. And we've got a member from Happy Valley in Milwaukee that are representatives on that, that group, ad hoc group. Hopefully, we can get them to start listening to us. The Parks and Rec meeting last night had a great presentation from the Oregon State Parks discussing ADA, which is the American Disability Act, and ABA, which I had never heard of before, which is the Architectural Barriers Act. And we went over accessibility issues. Darren gave us an update on park maintenance and the fact that we only have one seasonal worker now to do all of that. So things aren't going as fast as we all would like, but they're still moving forward. Vandalism is getting really bad. The board approved a grant asked to cover 50% of the paved outer loop at the Gladstone Nature Park. And this is going to come before city council. The board made their final choices on park amenities, benches, tables and trash receptacles, which I, I, I'm amazed how long those conversations last. So now we can standardize. And Martha, who is our newest parks board member, she's going to pull together Parks Volunteer and Information Program, so I'll keep you guys tuned on that. Our next meeting, August 23rd at 5:30, it will be here at City Hall. It's a work session. And then we have a joint city council Gladstone School Board meeting on August 31st at 5:30 at the high school. So that's all I have. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
Oh, yes.
I was under the impression, isn't it the school board meeting in lieu of our work session?
Is that what we're?
No, but the information that I just received this afternoon is that the school board needs that date to interview candidates for their vacant positions. So tomorrow it will probably be postponed.
Okay, so there you go. The 30, yeah. All right, so motion was made by Council Tracy to adjourn. Do I have a second?
A second.
Motion was made by Council Tracy, seconded by Council Hartman to adjourn. Do I have any further discussions? Nothing. Could you do a roll call vote, please?
Council Todd.
Yes.
Council Hartman.
Aye.
Council Garland.
Yes.
Council Tracy.
Aye.
Council Alexander.
Yes.
Council Ripley.
Yes.
Mayor Stimple.
Yes, meeting adjourned at 8:25 PM. Thank you, everybody.